Okay, let's try this again. Sorry about that, people. My computer rebooted while I was talking and I guess it lost everything. And Todd's going to turn on the chat, so let me know if people can hear me now.
If everyone can go ahead, they'll have to refresh their screens to be able to make the chat enabled.
Much better, okay. Awesome. All right, I was gonna, I'll start over, but again, thanks to everybody that attended. I think it's been a great success and it looks like everybody had a lot better IT experiences than I've had so far this morning. I blame it on the snow, we're having actually a snowstorm here on the East Coast, but. So thank you, people, for attending and thanks to Ed and Todd for doing an awesome job and they were able to pull this together and really help us with the platform and get things going. And I also want to thank the presenters and the speakers. We, people are very innovative in what they were able to pull off and I think this is allowing us a great new opportunity to do things like a NORCON conference. All right, so now if I can get my. Okay, so let's talk safety. As the slide says, there's a, there's a couple of safety concerns that keep me awake at night and when the late summer and the fall, when we were having lots of wildfires in different parts of the country, the possibility of a rocket creating a major fire always worries me. And I just want to emphasize that fire safety continues to be one of our highest priorities. So, you know, if you're flying in areas that are experiencing drought or prone to wildfires, please do everything you can to prevent fires and abide by the local rules and regulations that are in effect associated with fires. So if, in our policy is if there's a burn ban in place for your launch location, it's against the safety rules and the safety code to launch during that ban. So unless you have written permission from an appropriate authority to launch while a particular burn ban is in effect, then you would be in violation of the safety code. And it's one of those things that I really wish we didn't have to do and it wasn't something that prevented us from launching, but these wildfires are really bad. The second thing is if people could continue to work on controlling launch angles and you know, don't ever fly spectators and vehicles. We're dealing right now with an incident that there was a brother large rocket landed and dinged two cars and having to deal with getting all that straightened out and getting people's vehicles fixed. And then lastly, if you experience an incident, even if it's property damage and something related to a something is going to be handled locally, you know, please send me an email, give me a call as soon as possible so that we can get it documented and better understand what happened. You know, with the one recent one that we're dealing with, we knew nothing about it until somebody contacted our insurance agent and he's like, hey, John, what's up? And we know what's going on with it, so you know, let us know. Okay. Just again, to remind people who the officers and trustees are, here's the list and thanks goes out to all the members of our Board of Trustees. It's my honor to serve with this dedicated group and these people do an awesome job working for you and the association. The NOR headquarters and staff, most of you all know Marie, our headquarters manager. Certainly you know Todd, but, and I think everybody's aware, but just in case you're not, Todd is our, an employee now of the organization and he's Director of Member Communications and Publishing. And in doing so, we brought our publishing in-house and it allows us to do a much better and more efficient job. Couple notes on our headquarters, if you are going to try to contact headquarters or need something over the course of the next week, Marie is going to be out next week. So your calls will not be answered for a week. And then secondly, her office hours are typically just general business hours and so please, you know, it's not a 24/7 operation as much as we would like it to be. So calling her late at night or 2:00 in the morning, you know, she's not going to answer the call and it's, it's just outside of our business hours. And then lastly, we also have a couple contractors who do independent work for us. Anne Heacock is our accountant and she's doing an awesome job helping us streamline our accounting processes and get them up to speed, as well as John Bolden, who continues to help us with our web presence. So let's talk a little bit about stats for the association and, you know, I got a question last night and here's some numbers to help back it up. Now, right now, our membership is about 7,450 members. I checked this morning and we're up at 7,452. This is the rough breakdown, junior leader and senior members. We have 113 life members and in the past I've been reporting 33, 34. Basically, it was the difference between the total and what was broken out in junior leader and senior. But we went back in our database and did a, several different ways of trying to identify who the life members are and we're coming up with what we think is a solid number of 113 now. So that's the distribution across the different categories. We also have our high-power members that remain strong. About half of our eligible members who could be certified for high-power are certified. Again, the breakdown, our level, our junior level one certification program still remains strong. We have 561 teachers, 227 our sections and in our sections, about 45% of our membership identifies as being associated with the section. I for one think that that number is probably a little bit low and you can check when you go into your profile, so when you're renewing, when you do a change of address for us, check and see if you're associated with a section. There's a part in there with some dropdown boxes for listing all the sections and click on it and that'll help us ensure that we're associating you with a particular session. All right, so let's look at sort of trends in membership and the blue line is our 2019 membership trend, so trending upwards from January and it peaked October of 2019 and that was about 77, 7,750 so members. It dropped a little bit after that and started to rebound. And then going into 2020, we were maintaining a fairly good, strong presence of above 7,600 members. Then COVID hit us and things dropped off fairly significantly. We dropped down about 250 members from that high peak at the beginning of the year. And now we're ending up right around 7,400 members, closing out 2020 and into excuse me, 2021. Interesting, if you take a look at the average members across the years, year over year, we're still about 50 members ahead from 2020 compared to 2019. So I think we're doing okay. And also looking at, you know, why do we have a decline in members year over year? As best we can tell, it looks like that the big dip is in student memberships. So TARC Student Launch Program, some of the other college programs are all fairly active in either requiring or encouraging their students to be members of the NOR. And that's driven a lot of our growth. That's fallen off this past year because those programs are doing less, because schools are doing less and so with that, we've noticed, I think the majority of the drop associated with that. And then lastly, talking about membership, the distribution of age. This is fairly typical of the distribution for the past five, six years now. The one thing that has changed, actually fairly significantly, from over the last six months, our mean and median age both went up two years. And so now their mean is 48-year-old and median is 54. So a little bit of change in that, but still fairly strong. All right. Now let's talk about the NOR as an organization. So I'm going to go into detail on these four major points, but overall, I think it's important that our members understand that, you know, we are a business and an organization and there's a lot that goes into that. So first and foremost, the NOR is a business and we have to operate as a business and the business climate is changing all the time. We are a nonprofit and are a 501(c)(3), we have tax filing requirements. There's continued to change with that has some accounting things that we need to make sure we're on top of. But the bottom line is at the present time, we're over a half a million dollar a year business. When I started, we were probably on the order of 300,000 to 350,000. So we've increased fairly dramatically even over the last five years now. And as a half a million dollar a year business, it's a lot different than operating a business that's $100,000, $200,000. And so it's really important that we maintain efficiency in our operation, that we use a good mix of employees, contractors and purchase services. For example, our member card services, that's a service that we pay somebody outside of the our headquarters operation to manage and process the member cards and mail them out to you. And we just found that that's a more efficient way of doing things. We can get you a better card, they have the machinery to do it with seven, over 7,000 employees, there's no way Marie could keep up with that. So in not having to hire another person just to do that, we just farm it out as a service. Same thing goes with like our web services and our accountant. Another thing I think is important that I've been driving to and the reason that we brought some accounting services on board is I'd like to see us eventually get to an audit of our financial practices and not to say that we were horrible in the past, I think we did fairly well, but again, financial things are changing and we want to be reflective of a large organization that has a half a million dollar budget and dealing with that kind of funds. And so we're looking at our different financial practices and how we do things. And we've made some significant changes even over the past, past year with respect to it. We have a much more formal practice in terms of teeing up and paying bills and paying for different services and things. And it goes through a multi-step process. It's actually very, very efficient, but it gives us a better level of accountability and we don't have one person sitting in their their corner office in their house writing off checks and there's nobody ever seeing any parts of it. So that's something that we're continuing to drive towards and something that I'd like to see in the not-too-distant future. And then lastly, you know, we must keep in mind succession planning and, you know, how to deal with, you know, some, some unanticipated change and you know, I've always learned in our business or my business that I work in, you know, we always somewhat jokingly, but it's, it's not really that much of a joke. But you know, what happens if, if John gets hit by a beer truck, what's going to happen to the organization? Well, you know, we're, we're trying to look at all the different pieces of the operation and make sure we have redundancy and the ability to pick up and keep moving in case something happens to one of our officers or employees. So we're building practices and things into the system so we better understand and can keep things moving. All right, so the other part, another part of the organization is that we're a member-based organization and people purchasing our memberships and, or the purchase of your membership that results in a number of benefits and services that we provide. Okay, to the individual member, we give you a number of different things that are directly affecting or should be impactful to the member, things like insurance, a magazine, member guidebook, web services, things like that. We have a, you know, a number of years ago, our members said they really like a more durable and nicer look, a membership card, so we got that for people. We offer high-power certifications, we have our NOR sections and a number of other things that we do for our members directly, competition, national events, et cetera. And then there's some things that are, that I would kind of classify as indirectly beneficial to the member and more for the benefit of the entire hobby. You know, we offer educational programs and educational materials, we give grants and scholarships to teachers and students. We offer a fairly robust array of STEM programs and things like TARC Student Launch, ORLIST, other things. And to me, one of the most important things that we offer are the safety codes that keep the hobby safe as well as very much operational in terms of things like our ability to purchase insurance and show things like schools and different programs, how safe the hobby is. And just being able to point to a safety code that's been adopted by organization and recognized now worldwide gives us a lot of latitude to drive our, things like our insurance company or prices down. Okay, so let's look at yet another part of our organization and let's talk about our sources of income. Okay, so this has not changed significantly since I can remember, but our primary source of income and revenue is from dues that our members pay, about 75%. So the pie chart shows a breakdown to relative proportions of the different pieces of income coming into the organization. And then the chart just gives you the numbers if you're so interested. But generally, what a handful of different categories, memberships again by far, we get some income from advertising and sport rocketry, our national events, about 3%. We get a chunk of money from NASA and in many, most years, we get a chunk of money from the Aerospace Engineers Association associated with TARC. We get some donations and then there's just sort of a lump of others, things like other miscellaneous services we provide that we collect a little bit of money, our interest income, things like that. One quick note on the student launch fees or money that we get in the TARC. Almost always that's, the majority of that is just passed through for the organization to run those particular programs. So in the case of the student launch program, the NOR actually has a contract with NASA to run the student launch program. And in doing so, they pay us money to effectively run that, that program. So when we send a crew down to Huntsville to run the student launch, that all the expenses associated with that come out of that pot of money. A chunk of that fund also goes towards paying for additional part of our insurance premium. But, but overall, it's predominantly just the pass-through. So I mean, that's a fairly significant piece of our income and we don't expect it to change much, even if it does change, it's, it's pretty much a wash after we get done with it. Okay. The last point I just want to mention and get, make sure people understand is we provide membership to our members who are younger than the age of 25 at a rate that's below our costs. And this has been done on purpose by the organization. And the, the reason we do it is, you know, we feel that that investment by the organization can reap long-term benefits in the form of people either staying on as members of the organization or leaving the organization and coming back later in life to become active members again. And just to give you a sense of cost and hopefully this isn't confusing and I did it just as more of a scaling kind of practice. But if we look at the overall expenses of the organization and divide that by the total number of members, and I use the average number of members for the different years. In 2019, our cost per member was about $87.46. In 2020, we dropped that down to $78.44. In our current budget, that cost is dropping down to $76.74. And so again, on the income side, only 75% of our income comes from member services, so it's not exactly a one-to-one kind of comparison. But as you can see, it does cost us significantly more than our, the $25 or $30 that we would charge a younger member for the benefits that we provide. Okay, so let's talk then summarize our expenses for the year of 2020. A lot more categories than we have for our income side of things, but expenses, three big categories, publications, headquarter operations and member services. Publications, sport rocketry and our member guidebook, headquarter operations includes everything Marie does at headquarters. Our member cards come out of that and just the, the overhead cost of running the business comes out of that headquarters operations budget. Member services are things that we then pay back to the members. Other than sport rocketry, there's a couple minor things, but the main piece of cost associated with member services are insurance bill. And just to give you a point of reference, last year, our insurance bill was $85,000. And that insurance payment is based in part on the risk of our, or the perceived risk of what we do to the insurance companies as well as the number of members that we have. And so as we grow, our insurance bill continues to grow as well, just because there's a per capita cost associated with, with our insurance. All right, so if we look at a balance, and for those of you who can do all the numbers in your head, you probably already figured this out, but if our income in 2019 was $560,000 and our expenses were roughly $652,000, our net was a loss of $91,000 and in 2020, we actually dropped our income down to about $477, our expenses were still fairly high at $589,000, so we lost $112,000. Now, one point of reference and one note associated with that, in 2019, we were actually trying to spend down some of our cash and without getting too in-depth in terms of our our finances, this is just one snapshot of our finances. This is a balance sheet and it's a point in time thing. This, the numbers from here actually are some of all the income and all the expenses over the course of the fiscal year 2019 and 2020. But it's not reflective of, for example, how much cash we own hand. It doesn't mean that we're $112,000 in debt at the end of 2020. In fact, we have over $180,000 in cash on hand in our bank accounts right now. We've been solvent, we pay all our bills, everything is fine, but we cannot continue this trend and remain fiscally solvent. So that's why we're looking at things and evaluating our finances in much more detail than now and why I've sort of started talking to people about, hey, let's take a look at our finances and we're going to have to make some, some changes. Okay. So what are some of the challenges we have related to our finances? Our expenses are increasing faster than our revenue. Our last dues increase was in the year 2003, so we've, our, the rate of income from our individual members has not changed over 17 years. We're trying to provide the services and benefits that we promised at a reasonable cost. Things like publishing, things like our member cards, postage goes up. A lot of things are costing more money now than they did over the course of the last 17 years. We're operating a reasonably sized business and largely with a volunteer workforce. I mean, the, the management team of the NOR is all volunteer, your Board of Trustees. So we're not having to pay costs for these things, but it's a challenge and, you know, people's time and their ability to spend time managing an organization like this is always a challenge. We have to meet financial reporting requirements for the IRS and we file an IRS Form 990. That's the form that you fill as a nonprofit organization so that you don't have to pay taxes. And that's a requirement that we do every year. It's a fairly complicated form, I'm sure I could figure it out if I spent the rest of 2021, I'm reading all about IRS tax law, but it more and more just requires the advanced help of an accountant and somebody that sets up our accounting system to feed into the IRS Form 990. We have a diverse membership and different people within the organization have different desires and expectations with respect to the NOR as an organization. And lastly, the current economy is, for a lot of people, is making things hard and as costs go up and as the economy tightens up, that makes it more difficult for us as an organization as well. Okay, so taking all that into consideration, first I'll walk people through our budget and give you a comparison year over year and then we'll talk about what we're doing to, to make some changes with respect to our finances. So if you look at our 2021 budget, here's the numbers, I'll leave it up long enough so people can read, but again, roughly 75% of our projected income is from our memberships. Sport Rocketry, still roughly the same, national events, everything is pretty much on par. It's the same relative dollars and absolute dollars as last year with the exception of our, our membership and I'll talk about that in a minute. The net change and increase is going to be primarily due to membership funding and some minor changes in some of our other income streams. All right, so if we look at our expenses, we have the same slices of the pie, publications, headquarter operations, member services, et cetera. One of the things I hope you notice is that our publication cost is going way down, so it's $117,000 difference year over year. But our headquarters operations is going up fairly significantly, $88,000 a year. This is a result of bringing Todd Swine in as an in-house publisher as opposed to paying him in, in the external, as a contractor. So by moving publications in-house, it's a, what I'd like to say is a win-win. Todd is, is very happy being an employee of the NOR and we're extremely happy and glad that he's on board now. Doing the stuff that he's been doing for us in the past directly as a NOR employee, which gives us the benefits of lower costs in publications as well as things like that succession planning piece that, that I was talking about before. We have more than one person now that can pick up and keep things moving in the event that something happens to, to our employees or our management team. Okay, so overall though, we're expecting and anticipating a $20,000 decrease in our overall expenses year over year, just by tightening up different parts of the budget and we hope being a little bit more efficient. Okay, so what's going to change then in summary to balance the budget? So we're going to reduce costs. So sport rocketry, publishing, we're bringing that in-house like I just said, so we save some of that, but we shift some of the expenses to another category. But the overall net is a positive in terms of reducing the cost overall to the organization. Another thing we're doing is we're going to offer sport rocketry as an electronic-only option for people. We're not going to change the cost associated with that, so if you decide you want electronic-only, we'll send you the link and it'll be available to you. If you only want it, if you want it as paper, you'll still get it as paper. I'll talk a little bit more detail on how we're going to I'll talk a little bit more detail on how we're going to deal with the electronic version of sport rocketry a little bit later on. But the overall bottom line is, and it seems contrary, and you have to really think about it and look at the numbers, but it's not a one-for-one reduction in cost if we just take away a paper copy of a magazine and don't mail it out. Our print runs in the print world are, I know more about print than I thought I'd ever need to know, but our print runs are relatively small. And so we're really not getting that much in terms of efficiency in printing any additional copies or taking away copies from overall print runs. So we don't realize any significant savings, but it's something our members have asked for and we'll squeeze a little bit about that in terms of net savings to the organization. We're going to offer the member guidebook as electronic-only. This is actually going to save us about $15,000 a year. It's fairly costly to print. The print quality isn't the same quality as the magazine, and that's by choice because of print cost. By moving it to electronic-only, I think it's going to give us some other benefits. I'll probably be a little bit redundant, but you know, we can offer more content. We can offer quicker to our members. And that coupled with the savings, we just think it's the prudent thing to do. Other things that we're reducing our costs, our accountant is going to charge us less this year than she did last year. She spent a lot of time cleaning things up. Now we're more on a, just a maintenance kind of plan with her, so it's a little bit less. We're going to do a small decrease in grants and scholarships. We don't think it's going to be too significant or impactful, but we need to ratchet that back just a tiny bit. And we're looking at different parts of operations to make things more efficient from our operations perspective. And to give you an example, we looked at our phone bill and we found out that actually we were paying a significant amount of money in our phone bill that we really weren't using the service. And so by eliminating that, we're actually saving $600 a month in our phone charges. And so by peeling back the layers and really evaluating all the different parts of the operation, we're trying to determine what do we need, what do we need to be efficient? And what do we need in terms of being able to provide the services to the members in as efficient and a cost-effective way of doing things? So how are we going to increase income? We're going to increase our member dues and I'll talk about that specifically in a second. But overall, the combination of everything coming together is we have a balanced budget for 2021. All right, so new dues structure. So the board looked at this and we thought about it and we ran a bunch of numbers and did the best we can. And I guess I'll preface all the, well, I'll tell you the bottom line and then I'll go back and tell you kind of what's driving it. So the board voted to increase dues from $62 to $70 for the average senior member and from $25 to $30 for all those members paying the $25 fee. All the other things, and I'll put up the fee schedule in a second, were done proportionately in these ratios for the different membership categories. So why is this needed and why is this important? Okay, the NAR dues, as everybody should know, has remained the same since 2003. If we just look at inflation, inflation since 2003 was 44.15%. So in terms of our dollars and our buying power, the $62 that you paid in 2003 would cost us almost $90 in terms of equivalent services and spending ability today. All right, so that's over two, over a third of the value of that $62 is costing us a third more than we had in the past. So we've been able to keep dues at $60 for a long time, I think, for a couple of reasons. One is when they said it is 62, they guessed right. We grew faster than our expenses for a number of years. Just by fairly steep growth year over year, we were able to maintain our expenses and our income in relative balance that now it's starting to diverge. And this year really emphasized it when we flattened out our growth curve and we didn't have that extra projected growth that we were experiencing in the past. Okay, so again, we're going to increase it $62 to $70 and $25 to $30. The change will take effect March 1st. And this is to give us time to get everything in place and to test the system and make sure everything is working properly. And we're going to honor all existing commitments at the existing rates. And so predominantly, this is for people that have purchased a three-year membership. So if you signed up for a three-year membership, if you sign up today, we're going to honor today's cost in the three-year membership over the course of those three years. And then we'll flip it over into the new fee schedule. So for those of you that have a three-year membership, you may have to work with us a little bit, but we'll work and identify those people. But if there's any glitches, just, you know, call us, let us know and we'll work to resolve the issue. All right, so this is what the new dues structure and we'll post this up. I'll put it in the Rocketeer as well as you'll see this on the website and all our material relatively soon. But this is the dues structure. So again, $70 for seniors above the age of 26, $30 for seniors below the age of 25 for leaders and for junior members. If you want first-class magazines, it went up the $8 or $5. It went up proportionately. And then, again, we raised the three-year membership relative similar proportion. And then these are the rates for foreign members, as well as people that do family membership. So slight increases in all our memberships across the board. Okay, and again, this will go in effect March 1st. Okay, so that was the big board discussion in December. Some additional board actions that we discussed if you attended the meeting on Friday. But we're continuing to fund our section grants. We think that's a very valuable program and we want to encourage our sections as much as possible. We will continue to offer free recruitment memberships to our sections and to section activities, try to encourage sections to bring on new, especially the younger members. So we're going to continue to offer those recruitment certificates to sections. And we're going to, we voted to update and purchase a subscription to a cloud-based office suite for our headquarters and operations software that allow us to do things like share files a little bit easier. We have better and more efficient storage capabilities and also archival capabilities that'll make things a lot easier for us. Some additional things that we talked about. We discussed, but we haven't made a change yet. But do we really need to continue to provide an 800 number? And like a lot of things associated with running a business like the NAR, I learn interesting things all the time. But for an 800 service, you actually have to pay a flat rate every month for the service, as well as a per-minute charge for each phone call. So what does that mean? Well, okay, I have a cell phone that has international plan and I can call the NAR headquarters from anywhere in the world and it doesn't cost me any more than if I were in the house next door to Marie. But if I call on the 800 number, I get the per-minute charge tacked on to the thing, even though it's not costing me any additional funds and it's not costing, there's no difference in service from the NAR's end of things. So we're going to evaluate this and see how significant it is. I don't think it should be that significant of a thing moving forward. And we've done things like on our webpages, we're changing the number to the level number for our line there in Marion, Iowa, instead of the 800 number. The 800 number does still exist, but we're going to look at it over the next couple of months and see if we truly need it. And then if not, we'll eliminate it. Talk about sport rocketry. We had a fairly good discussion about making sport rocketry available in electronic form. And the tension that goes along with that sort of is in the, you know, it's a member benefit and members are, a number of members view that as a very significant benefit. So if that's a member-only kind of thing, if we make it immediately available in PDF that it then could be widely distributed, is that unfair to the members and lessen the value as a member benefit? On the flip side of it is if I'm paying for the magazine and I want to be able to load it onto my iPad and take it on an airplane with me whenever flying starts again and use it as I see fit, then the current format is not as conducive to that. So what we really ended up with was we're going to change to a PDF format after two months. So essentially one copy cycle or one issue cycle. And after that, we'll change it to a PDF format that gives you a lot more flexibility. And then we're going to explore some other formats other than the current flip book format to see if we can come up with something that makes it a little bit more accessible and easier for people to use. Member guidebook, like I said, we're going to make that electronic-only where we think that it actually offers us some exciting new opportunities. We can make it and expand the information in there. We're not limited by page count. I've already coerced several authors into helping me to provide some new content and some innovative content for the member guidebook, both in terms of model rockets as well as high-power rocketry. So we're hoping that we can actually expand the utility and the value of our member guidebook to members by doing it in this format. And then things like the virtual meeting, we had a discussion about that. And how do we deal with, again, sort of the balance of you as, as people who've paid to participate in a virtual meeting versus making that content then available to the general membership, many of whom didn't pay for it? And so we think we came up with a reasonable compromise of we're going to allow the attendees to have access to it for 30 days. And if you didn't purchase a ticket, or we're actually able to allow people up until the end of February to continue to purchase a ticket if somebody so desired, have access to the content and have that exclusivity. And then after 30 days, we'll work on a plan to roll out the content to make it available in video form to the membership as a member-only benefit. Okay, so I've got to catch up on my coffee. Some additional actions that the board talked about. We're going to continue to explore ways to have virtual events. And we talked at length and I guess my characterization of sort of where I'm ending up with this is this is such like a wild new, wild west kind of adventure that we're going on in terms of meeting formats and how to do things. And technology is just giving us so much more capabilities and more abilities to do things with meetings that, you know, definitely the feedback was having a virtual NARCon like this come next year, a lot of people love that idea. Some people, including myself, I see a lot of value in still having in-person events. Then it becomes the conversation of, well, if we have it in-person and virtual, is that going to be hard? And I'll just say, well, it may be harder, it may be easier than we think. We just don't know yet. But, and then there's all kinds of other issues associated with having in-person meetings and virtual meetings. And do we sell enough hotel rooms to make the hotel or wherever the meeting space is affordable, et cetera? So I think the way we left it and the way we, I think we are kind of forced to leave it right now is we're going to continue to explore ways to do virtual events, including these hybrid kind of virtual combined with in-person events. And stay tuned and we're excited. We're going to look at and form a committee to review the bylaws. Carol Marple, our vice president, is going to be heading this up. And the last that there was any change to the bylaws at all was in 2011. And we think that there's a lot of stuff in there that we could modernize and be reflective of how things operate in the current timeframe instead of when they were originally drafted. So we'll see what we can do to bring those up to date. Stay tuned, that'll be something that the membership actually has to vote on. And just a reminder to people that the board elections are coming up. We have three trustees that will be up for election this coming term. And so stay tuned. We're going to run the election exactly like we did last year. So it'll be all remote voting of the membership. We'll roll things out in a similar fashion. And we think it did fairly well last year and how we executed it. So we're going to keep with that model. Okay, wrapping up, almost to the end. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate the NAR and how we've had to deal with COVID. And if nothing else, COVID has forced us to change. Not that, I think, having such a devastating situation as COVID has brought upon us. I wish there are other ways that have, could have forced us to change. But I think, you know, the really good news is that we have adapted. You know, people are doing virtual events and meetings. And I think people are doing things that they never thought of doing before. I mean, I heard people are having kind of pop-up groups that just now get together and talk virtually that they didn't before. And they probably didn't meet in person before either. So, you know, we're using the technology to create new things. I know my local section, Navar, uses, has Zoom meetings once a month. And we get much larger participation like we're doing with NARCon here. So it's actually making it more available to more members. We still are having launches. Our launches are different, like our club meetings, but people are figuring out how to do this in a safe way and by abiding by the local requirements and restrictions. And we just ask that you continue to do this as we move into the future. I know a lot of people have spent a lot of their free time now building rockets. And I don't know, in, at the various social events the last couple of days, a lot of people had lots of rockets in the background on the Zoom part of the calls. I don't have that, I haven't been able to find the time to build rockets. But hopefully, a number of those rockets that people have built, they're using this time efficiently. And when things open up a lot, again, you can get out and fly them. And our manufacturers have been awesome, too. They've been able to supply us with the materials that we need to build rockets and keep things going strong. So I guess Gary and Estes and all the motor manufacturers out there, be ready, because there's a whole bunch of pent-up rockets, I think, out there ready to launch as soon as things open up a lot, lot more. All right, some other good news. Again, our current membership is 74, roughly 7,450 at this point in time. Given how things started to decline pretty rapidly in March, actually pleasantly surprised that we're maintaining. And I think this goes out to the membership that, you know, you continue to see value and support the organization. And I hope with the additional changes that we're making to things like our dues structure, that you'll see the value in it. We have 227 sections, that's 15 more total net over, or last year. Chuck Neff continues to do just an awesome job running section activities. Any problem that people have, Chuck is like right there on top of it, working to solve the problems right away. And I can't emphasize enough, if you have a question about a section, you want to form a section, talk to Chuck. If you have an immediate question on insurance, Chuck's the person. If you need a launch site certificate, talk to Chuck. He's doing a great job associated with running our sections. High-power certi, oh, the other piece, if you're doing, looking for a new launch site and need some help with some background information on safety, et cetera. Again, Chuck has a pretty decent package of information available to help you out with finding a new launch site. High-power certification continues to grow. High-power certification continues to grow. And it's a very strong part of our hobby and we're happy for that. And the magazine remains one of the premier offerings, I think, of the organization and that in a large part is thanks to Tom Beach, our editor, who's been doing it. It's over 25 years now. I think Tom's been doing this. So, you know, great job, Tom. And we couldn't do this without you and volunteers like you. And Todd in the publishing part of it and the layout of the magazine continues to keep it fresh and up to date and just a great magazine. I'm happy to say that we remain committed to our core mission and the values. You know, we're started as an educational program and in support of education related to rocketry. We still do that. I mean, TARC in spite of two years of or over a year of dealing with the pandemic, two school cycles that we've had to deal with it now is still strong and going. And the aerospace side of things are still interested and engaged in TARC. The launch program, they've adapted and they're dealing with smaller numbers, but it is still functioning and working well. Our list, other educational programs are still alive and well. We still do scholarships and educational grants to students and teachers and outreach programs. And while we decreased the overall funding a little bit, it's still a large viable program. Section grants, something our sections say they need and especially sections starting up, we have grants available, $250 that you apply for and we give you the grant. We continue to support the Museum of Flight and the Rocketry Collections there. COVID has kind of slowed things down, but they're, as soon as things level off and they can get back into work, they're ready to wrap up some things on the Stein collection and, you know, jump right into the Pister collection. And so we're continuing to support that. And we view that as something very important for the preserving the history of the hobby. And just so many new things that are going on. I learned a lot this weekend, you know. There, just listening to the different talks and some of the new things that people are doing and how people are embracing lots of different parts of technology, you know, people that are using 3D printers and laser cutters and all these technologies that you know, if so desired, you could have in your home workshop now, that just weren't available even 10 years ago in the forms that they are now, it's just phenomenal. So now we're still learning and, you know, doing a lot of great fun things with our hobby of rocketry. This doesn't change and I think it reflects sort of the a good floor or base for our, the priorities of our hobby. You know, we continue to want to make flight safety our organization's first priority and highest priority. You know, this isn't a good hobby if people end up getting injured doing so. So, you know, by all means, please stay safe and fly safely. We continue to want to support and celebrate all forms of commercial sport rocketry. We want to continue to increase our size of the organization, expand on things like outreach and education. We want to continue to offer full transparency in the business side of the things and allow people to participate and understand what we do in the organization and continue to provide national support to the local sections, which is where we think, you know, the bulk of the club activity needs to go on. National events. Ed gave us a good update about the best thing I can tell you is both events right now are still on and we're committed to having the national sport launch at the end of May and near um at the end of July. Like last year, we will have to continue to evaluate the situation and determine at some point in time whether it is a go or no-go. We're communicating with the local organizers. We're evaluating what's going on. We're talking to the hotels and the venues that we're dealing with. At some point in time, and we're trying to figure out exactly what that date is, we will have to make a go-no-go assessment for each one of these. Right now, we're optimistic that we're not going to have to make the no-go call on them, but stay tuned. We're going to do everything we possibly can to have these in a safe and a fun kind of manner this year, but we're kind of tied to the risk associated with having to do a last-minute cancellation of an event like this and the overall risk in terms of finances to the organization. So stay tuned. All right. At five or eight dollars more per year in dues, we still think that this is the best value you can get in the hobby. We have a magazine that's at least 48 pages every month. We continue to offer you $5 million in insurance. You can do high-power certification through Level 3. We do a lot of different programs, competitions, educational kinds of activities. We offer a family discount and we hope and we want to continue to support our mission of safety and education. And, you know, whatever anybody can do to reach out and recruit to keep the NAR growing, you know, we certainly appreciate it. What can you do? Fly safe. And first and foremost, that's the most important thing you can do as a member. Recruit additional members, high-power flyers, competitors, you know, whatever turns you on. Take that enthusiasm and help others understand it and become enthusiastic as well. I'm taking your turn volunteering to help with your local section or with the NAR nationally. Let us know what talents you have and, you know, we'll definitely try to match you up with a job. And a lot of times they tend to be opportunistic, but just knowing what what people can do out there and what people's bandwidth is with respect to helping us with a particular problem is always helpful. Certainly, you know, locally is where a lot of the action is. So do community outreach and help with your community leaders, community educators and young people. And make sure everybody knows and takes advantages of that we do have scholarships and grants available for education, both from the student perspective as well as teachers. And in summary, be safe, have fun, and just pay it forward. And with that, I will take questions. Again, if you're asking questions, you need to go to the Q and A. I can jump over to that. So Todd, did I just give an hour and a half presentation and nobody listened? So I'm not seeing any questions. Does that mean there are none or? Can we jump in and just let me know that the question feature is open?
John, there are plenty of questions in the Q and A.
All right, I'm not seeing any. What am I doing?
Refresh your page?
Okay. There they are. Okay. All right, so if I start. All right, suggested like, oh, wait a minute. All right, I think I know how to do this. All right, so Daniel Kraus, take advantage of the NAR grants to add to your club's equipment. Thanks, Daniel. Will Shidnar, start an effort to help sections do a splash analysis like the one that Houston section did. Let's talk offline. Well, I think that could be something that if it's something that we could offer people, if there's a desire for it, certainly I think it could open up the eyes in terms of people better understanding what happens to flights under different conditions. All right, this is a long one. From Kevin is not a nonprofit. Yes, we are a 501(c)(3). 2018. So Kevin, the IRS has been a bane of my existence for a number of years now. We are, we are a 501(c)(3) and we do have a letter that was generated in the 60s that certifies our nonprofit status, but we, there is an issue that we have with the IRS, not because of anything we've done, but something, there's a glitch in their system that is not recognizing that in totality, the NAR as a nonprofit. So depending on where and how you look, it comes up in a weird kind of way. So you asked about G Suite. Yeah. Contact us offline. As a section, you are a part of the NAR and we are actually registered with TechSoup, so we should be able to figure out a way of getting something like that for you. We just have to figure out the mechanics. So. Does a NAR have, all right, Daniel Wolf. We've never lost our 501(c)(3) status. It's just been difficult because the database that most companies use to look up whether you're complying with all of the 501(c)(3) stuff listed as suspended. But when we talk to the IRS, we're not suspended. So we've been doing that for a number of years now, trying to fix that. And our accountant is working very hard with me and our next check-in date with the IRS is mid-February and you know, I can't be optimistic anymore. I'm hoping for some change and hopefully that'll be the last that we have to deal with and the resolve our issue. Kevin, Samir 513C, virtual Narcon has been fantastic. Thanks, Gary. Any thoughts about continue to provide for virtual to in-person? I think I've answered that. Carol answering. All right, Ezra, user one. I don't see any details on cost for flyer insurance. I hope I answered that, but our insurance is $85,000 a year. It was last year. We're in the process of going out for bids on insurance this year and hopefully it doesn't go up significantly from last year, but we'll just have to wait and see. And Ed answered that. How much is a life membership? The board talked about that currently. It's $1,000. I don't think we came to a significant conclusion on that, but I think you can expect that over the course of the next month, that the board will come up with a definitive increase for the life membership as well. Any thoughts about continue to provide virtual attendees to? Last night issued clear internet. Yeah. Again, Mark, I think there's a whole bunch of different activities that we need to consider in terms of combining in-person versus a purely virtual. And I think there's a number of people, including myself, that would like it to be some kind of mix. So stay tuned and, you know, we're trying the best we can and, you know, we hope to be able to bring something to bear that allows our membership to sort of satisfy both worlds if that's all possible. Well, the, what will be the cost for family memberships? Your family membership will be $57 for the additional senior member and $20 for junior or leader member for the additional family membership. Bob Capa, lifetime membership hasn't changed since it was created. Will that remain the same or will it be the to increase? Again, I think that the, we will increase it. It's just we're trying to figure out how much to to increase it and what that would look like. Kevin, lifetime membership will also be going up. Okay. Okay, so let us, so and hopefully there, if there's more, we'll add that to our board agenda and see how we can expand it out and add it. It would probably, if all you want is the free, no-cost G Suite option, you should be able to do it under the umbrella of the NAR, but I don't know if we're allowed to mix it. So let us look into that and we'll see what we can do in terms of enabling the sections which are a part of the NAR to use our nonprofit status as part of their operations. So. How to become a life member? If you call NAR headquarters, we can, Marie can hook you up, but you have to wait at least a week. And currently, the life member cost is $1,000. Can you report on the profitability of this? I don't know the current numbers, but we have, what, 525-plus participants now? I don't know, four or five days ago, we were at over $10,000 in the funds that we brought in. I don't know what we're paying Excel Events. Todd, if you want to jump in and help me answer that, but I think in general, this is going to be a very profitable event because of the local cost of no hotels and different parts of it.
Sure, I can jump in on that. We are currently been working with Excel Events and our costs are roughly $500 per day for the event for a four-day event. With a practice day and then three days of the session.
Okay. And you know what the title is right now in terms of what we brought in?
I don't have the total of what we brought in. I do know that we're at 536 registered attendees. People have continued to register all the way through the event.
Okay, so Brian saying that the Friday stuff disappeared and you can't click. Reach out to Todd and again, I guess like I needed to do, try refreshing your browser. That often is helpful in making this this thing work. So that could be why you're experiencing an issue.
John, just to jump in on that, there's a setting at the top of the page for all the sessions. It is defaulting to today's current events. You just toggle that, it'll show all the days and you can go back and view events from Friday and Saturday. It is defaulting to today's current events. You just toggle that, it'll show all the days and you can go back and view events from Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Bob Kappa, can we get some answers to all the member concerns that were brought up last July and not responded to? I had five that were included in the follow-up emails and still not resolved. Let's see. All right, I'll try to do this from memory, Bob. One was Facebook and your ability to participate. I'd say A, it's not a member benefit, so you being punished for, as a NAR activity, I don't think applies per our bylaws. And let's see, you also wanted to bring back the needs fixing survey. I'll speak a little bit to that. When I was head of NAR sections, I was dealing with the needs fixing survey and I just think it was a lousy survey and didn't really tell us a lot that could help action in terms of actionable stuff. I mean, certainly the free-form questions are helpful, but now, I mean Chuck's available and if you have any issues associated with sections and that's what the needs fixing survey was geared to, reach out to Chuck and talk to him. I don't think he's turned down anything that people have asked him to address or, you know, not answered. And if it's something that you need to bring to the board, just bring it to the board. Okay, one, two, three. Number four was there's concern that we didn't have a member meeting. I guess we could argue semantics on that, but I think we have open board meetings, five or six times a year at least now. We had an open town hall meeting in which we discussed the elections. We're having a special meeting today to announce the the new change to the due structure. So I'm not sure I understand where we violated our bylaws and not had member meetings. So, and I can't remember what the fifth one was. So if you want to type it in and it could be if I scroll up. Jeff Fisher, I just came back after 20 years away. Why can't I get my original number back? Jeff, if you can help us, if you know your original number, can show us proof, we'll send it to you. And/or talk to Marie and we will try our best to find it. We do try as best we can to find original numbers, but if you are originally a member, a long, long time ago, when we first started, there may be, there are some gaps in the paper version of backup that we have. And then secondly, when we imported everything into our current database, it didn't preserve the the richness of member history the way we now would like it to. So again, if you can show us what your original number was, we'll get right up. And Mark also answered that. Rebecca, what has happened with the junior advisory board? That's a good question, Rebecca. Let's, oh, let's see, Carol. Carol's gonna reach out to you and, and, and work on that with you. So, good. Reggie, like my bank, offer a finder's fee to a member for any new recruitment. We've had that and actually at one point in time, we did offer a $5 reward for recruitment of members. That's something that A, dropped off my radar because of the managing that program. And secondly, I'm not convinced that it, it brings us a huge amount of value, but certainly if people think it's a worthwhile program, we can take a look at how to better administer it moving into the future, but the, currently it's, it's just a clunky way of administering such a program that, that makes it difficult. Let's see, any changes or updates to our insurance program? Presently, no, and I'm hoping that it remains the same as last year. We were able to last year, the, the, initially, we were told that if we kept our carrier that we've had for a number of years now, that there would be a wildfire exclusion in our policy. Then we, then we shopped their policy around and we're able to find one that doesn't have that wildfire exclusion. At some point in time, that may hit us, but I haven't seen anything now. Like I said, our insurance agent right now is, is trying to shop our policy around to see what he can get for us. The other thing associated with our policy, and we shouldn't have any issues with it this current year, but we also have to we pay if we continue to grow above the numbers that we project for the year, because it's a per capita rate that we would have to pay a difference, but because our growth is flat, that we don't have to pay that. But in terms of overall coverage, it's still, it remained exactly the same year every year. So it hasn't changed and we're hoping it won't change again. Brian, we listen. Others have been answering questions. Okay. Since junior level, sir, included the written exam, have the numbers of junior level one changed? I'd have to look at it, but I mean, my gut recollection is that it is still roughly about the same. And I know there, there may be some hiccups in that program that people are having problems getting the, the exam. Again, you know, a lot of this is section-based and so the sections have access to it and Chuck Neff, our section advisor, chair, helps administer that program for us and makes the things available. And so reach out to Chuck and he'll make sure that you get copies of, of all the exams. Sounds like it covered everything. Awesome. Did that one. Not had an annual member meeting as required by the bylaws since July 2019. Neither this session or last summer's town hall, loud motions from the floor. Again, Bob, I guess we'll have to agree to disagree, but I think if you want to make a motion from the floor, we can certainly entertain it, but we're limited in what that motion can be and what it amounts to. So. Ian, when we renew a membership, do we get a new card? Yes. When you renew your membership, we send you a new card. As best I could tell, the people that don't get a new card on a regular basis are the life members. But if you want a new card as a life member or if during the course of even the year, or if you're a three-year card, I think you get the card for three years. If you need a new card, just reach out to Marie at headquarters and we'll get you a new card and put it in the, the next batch run. George, John, if we have an unscheduled launch, do we need to notify NAR for insurance? George, no, our insurance is in effect at all times. The only time that we have to deal with notification associated with their insurance to be in effect is in the case where we have some sections that are dual affiliation between AAA and the NAR. And in that instance, you have to notify us to tell us what organization you are having to launch under. But otherwise, no, your insurance covers you regardless. If you have an unscheduled launch and you need a insurance certificate for that particular launch site, reach out to Chuck and there's actually an online form you could fill out as well, but if you have problems with that, reach out to Chuck and he can help you get it. And those are almost instantaneous. I mean, as quickly as we get them in the system, Bob, our, our insurance agent, it's all electronic now and they email them back out right away. So that process is has improved vastly over, I'd say, the last five or six years. Bill, can you please consider safety grants to TARC sections? If you're, if, if you're a TARC, that's a good question. Bill, reach out to me, send me an email and I'm not exactly sure how to answer that because I just want to verify how we're treating TARC sections to make sure that they're the equivalent of a regular NAR section. But if you're a regular NAR section, we wouldn't differentiate it, but if there's, if you're talking some special thing we do just for TARC that we've done with our insurance, then you'd have to form a section to be available to get the safety grant. Christopher, what is the net worth of the organization? Good question. Wait a minute. Christopher, our total net worth is $288,640.74. In your budget, you have factored in the possible loss of revenue to an increase in dues. Not renewing and issues due to COVID. As best we can, yes. And yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, we factored that in somewhat and put some give and take in there in terms of, will the increase in revenue also drive additional people out? We don't think it's that onerous and hope that it's not as onerous that it's gonna create a an issue in terms of our overall budget. But we did, Steve, we did think of that. Dan Wolf, so can I start asking corporations for donations for NAR? Sure, Dan, talk to Ed and coordinate with Ed on, on dealing with that. Bills, is it better for the NAR financially if a 60-ish member buys a life membership or stays year-to-year? That's a good question. If I were an actuary, actually, let's see, 60-year member. Is it better for who, I guess? Is it better for the individual? Probably, even if we increase the, the rate, it's probably better for the individual at 60. If you're gonna play based on actuarials and are gonna stay a member, regardless of whether you're a life member or just pay year-to-year, if you're 60 years old, you're probably better off getting a life membership. And it's something that we offer and I'm not sure what the, since I wasn't around when they started initially, what all of the the reasons for starting a life membership, but I can tell you organizationally and from a business perspective, put it, to the NAR, it's a lousy, it's a lousy investment and and, and saying that as a life member, I'll tell you that, but and the reason being is we're promising you for a flat fee of X amount of dollars, all the benefits associated with the organization in perpetuity and if, for example, our insurance goes up exponentially, you're still locked in and don't have to pay any supplemental fees for it. So looking at it with my, I'm running the NAR as a business hat, I think it's a, it's a lousy way of doing business and I, 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 I don't like that idea, the idea of offering life memberships. I'm looking at it as an individual. Let me tell you, I did a life membership because I just didn't, they don't have to worry about paying year-over-year. So but we're gonna continue the program for now and yeah, you just have to make your own financial decisions on, on whether you think it's worthwhile or not. Can you offer a payment option for life members? We've, we've thought about that and like a lot of things that people suggest, it's partly problematic in terms of a, offering a payment option is it's just the, the overhead associated with administering that. And then the other piece of it that I think is problematic is if we set it up so that your payment option, say, for example, we set up like a three-year payment option and let's say it's $1,000, that we say for illustrative purposes, if we keep the the life membership at $1,000 and we make it free payments, and I can't do the mental math in my head, of $400 each to, so we bump up the price a little bit to cover our administrative costs. One of the problems I have associated with it that administratively creates a problem for us is what happens after year one or year two that the, the person comes back and say, well, I don't want to do that anymore. Life changed for me and I really do need that $400 now. I just want to go back and be a, a regular member. The problem then becomes, what do we do as an organization? Do I refund all the money of which is, you know, it's doable, but it's administrative, it creates a problem. Or do we take a hard line and say, yeah, no, tough luck. If you pay into it, the $400 is ours and we'll spread that out across X number of years to cover your membership and then deal with it then. But hopefully you can sort of see my point. It, it just becomes something that I view from administrative point is being problematic. So but the board, there's a number of members on the board that think we should, so we'll continue to look at it and as we come up with a, a new price for life membership, we'll include that, whether or not we're gonna offer a payment plan as part of that option. Gerald, not the slight different age ranges, any plans discussion on the median age of members to at least remain 48 to go down? Any insights that can be shared, Gerald? Gerald, I'd say like, actually, we're doing a really good job of driving our median age and mean down. And when I first came on the board, I was always, I guess at one point proud of the fact and then it's organizationally horrified by the fact that I was always the median age. Fortunately for the organization, I am now more than, almost 10 years older than the median age of our group, which again, I think is a good thing and especially compared to the, the mean age, but so we are driving it down and I can tell you the biggest driver we've had are the, the different student programs that, that we're supporting. So things like TARC Student Launch, even Ezra, having the younger members in the organization are, are which driving it down. And if you look at that biomedical spike, it was pretty much asymptotic to the, the, the year axis for the longest period of time until the like 30s or 40-year-olds that were doing it. So. Hopefully that answered. And Gerald, we need to talk as president, so I'll, I'll reach out to probably over the next week. Lynn Wright, John, first time attending a meeting. I got a lot of info. Thank you. Oh, thanks, Lynn. Frank, is, it is on an old copy of your sport rocketry? Okay, hopefully Frank, I'm not sure what that refers to. So can a town hall meeting be considered as a member meeting? Lynn, that's what I'm considering as a, a member meeting, yes. David Kane, clarify and permit rules for juniors in mid-power. I'm about I about chased my kid off because I said you can't fly, buy AP Motors 18 without realizing he can't buy, but he can buy. Sure, David. Again, what, it would be helpful, reach out to us, send us an email. And obviously I'll put, I don't know if Wilkerson is still on, but Jim Wilkerson and heads our high-power committee. Heads our high power committee. And Steve Loveliner is our has our safety committee. Send a note to one or both or all three of us. And let us know what your issues are and we'll try our best to to help help out with that situation.
Alan Owens, is there optimism that NASA Student Launch will occur in person? I know that this is a NASA decision.
That's a good question. I I guess the best answer I can give you right now, Alan, Alan, is I don't know. It's my understanding that they're working on different alternatives to. Have some form of NASA Student Launch. That would include some in-person pieces of it at Huntsville, but that's still being worked out. So best thing I'd say is contact NASA if you're part of the the Student Launch Program on that end, or John Lingdahl is always good to help you. With some questions as well.
Buzz, is it better for NAR? 60ish member, it's best for the NAR if you get a life membership and then donate member fee equivalent every year?
Yeah, thanks, Buzz. Awesome. I love that answer. Why didn't I think of that?
And Steve, John, we probably need to consider whether off schedule launches need NAR notification by dual charred section or TRA?
Yes, Steve. Yes, they do. If you are having a joint launch that's NAR and AAA, you do need to notify either myself or or Steve. And declare what section, whether it's AAA or the NAR that is. Is is holding the launch so that that insurance applies.
And George, that clarifies it. We have the both have received. Okay, cool. Bill Dolphin, I meant better for the organization. I want my dues paying behavior to be best. Okay.
Bill, it's best for the organization if you keep paying year to year. Because then, quite honestly, if. If we do have to make additional adjustments down the road in in terms of our dues structure, that. It would be reflective in your dues. Otherwise, for the organization, you're locked in at that rate. Again, in perpetuity, which is a financial risk for the organization, so.
Lynn, I'm a rocketry instructor with the Air Force Junior RTC at North Shore High School in Houston. I believe the school districts cover the insurance at school events. This includes practice sessions. Great. But if it's a NAR, if if there are NAR members and a NAR section, our insurance also would would cover that and we can. Wherever you're doing the launch site, especially even at a school, we can offer an insurance certificate for that as well. John Thompson, as an individual, if you did a lifetime membership, a member could still offer to pay for it. Yes. Thanks. Larry, have you considered auto renewal options for memberships?
Yeah, Larry, we do have auto renewal. Much to the consternation of some and fun fact, Larry. Then this, a lot of people probably don't realize, but the National Association of Rocketry and my predecessors were. I'm quick to grab the nar.org. Internet domain. And there's also an association that is the NAR, which is the National Association of Realtors. And I'm always amazed at the number of people that write to the nar.org with realty questions and. There's, I can always tell when people are need their certifications renewed for the Realtors because I get these panicked emails and. They need help with whatever it is, and then I have to tell them that I'd love to help them with rocketry, but I can't help them on the real estate front. But also. It's interesting, we actually have had people sign up and pay dues, and we actually had one. That signed up, paid dues, set up auto renewal, and then second time around, he figured out that it wasn't the National Association of Realtors. It was a rocketry organization, and so he paid us for at least a year's worth of dues. So but yeah, we do have that as an option now.
And Carol. Got it. Trip, based on actuarial tables, life membership at 1,000 is a break even at age 72. Younger than that, you win. Yep. Jim Wilkerson is still on, and I believe that there is an auto renewal option. Yep. They keep coming. Got it. Frank, a person's NAR number will be on an old edition of support rocketry. Correct.
Yeah, if you saw that and sent us a picture of that to Marie, we'll hook you right up and can help you. Any kind of proof at all, we try our best to to be able to do that.
Any thoughts on an annual? Net promoter score remoter?
Okay, but I'm not sure what that is, so send me a note offline and let me know what that is. Yeah, I I don't want to try to answer because I just don't have a clue. Sorry. All right, let's see. John, I think you're missing a.
Could point to this about lifetime membership. One, NAR collects interest on the unused portion of the membership, so I'm setting. Yeah, no, we don't. When I got mine, it was a donation and my company offered matching grant. This NAR got $2,000.
That's a good. Wait, okay, so let me see if I can answer this in a couple of different ways. I guess in theory we do collect interest, although we don't, we don't hold people's life membership funds. In a separate account that. That we then draw from on an annual basis to. To utilize those funds, and I'm sure if we got like a slew of of memberships and it are. Our income. Greatly increased, we could reestablish some longer term investments to enable that, but. The practice for ever since I've been around has been that basically that $1,000 goes into our general operating fund and we use it accordingly, so. It's complicated and the way finances are, yeah, it's it's it could be done that way, but it would be be hard. And interest rates really aren't that good right now. And secondly, Bob. You got yours as a donation. I'm not sure. That the IRS would consider a $1,000 a a membership, a lifetime membership for which you're receiving benefits. For that as a donation, certainly if the company does, great, we do get a matching thing. There are a number of companies that offer matching. Grants that. People can donate as a pure donation. But again, the the thing that we've been trying to work with the IRS that. Has been giving me gray hair and and heartburn for a number of years, and it it predates me by a lot. Is that? Issue we have with the IRS that in in the one database, it's outward facing that then a number of companies look to to ascertain that we are a 51C3. We're listed as suspended or not active or something in there, and that's what causes the problem. And so. Bob, I think you make a a good point about matching donations and as fast as I can, I'm trying to fix that. But for matching grants and and donations from corporations in general, but the. Using the. A lifetime membership as a donation, I think that doesn't pass the the IRS. Legitim, but it's not legitimate with the IRS since we are receiving or giving you. Tangible things in in return for that, so that becomes problematic with the IRS thing, and it is problematic by three organization and the individual. If that comes into question, so but thanks, Bob.
Jim, first best answer on mid-power. Is I don't believe there are any specific age restrictions for an empower bond legal requirement. Which the NFPA requirement for the age purchase and the rules for high power flying, including juniors, the high power are in the high power section, so. Yeah, Jim, I think that's a good first thought and we'll. And we'll reach out and maybe we'll put something in the eRocketeer in an upcoming issue to also talk a little bit more detail about that one. Thanks, Jim. Bill Lindsey, could it be the board looking into putting together a recruitment program for TARC?
I guess I'd ask for. Perfect question, Bill, you mean recruitment for TARC students or recruitment for TARC mentors? Honestly, I think for the TARC mentors, we do as best we can. And Chip Barber does an awesome job of reaching out to mentors across the organization, so if that's your meaning. Certainly reach out to Trip and with any additional suggestions. In terms of recruitment for. TARC, again. I mean, we put out a lot of information and for us to develop our own program, in addition to what the Aerospace Industries Association already does. Would be very duplicative of their efforts, so. So maybe it's just a communications issue and we just need to better communicate. To our members on where this recruitment information is, but AI is all over. All kinds of different social media and different platforms and reaching out both to teachers and students with respect to TARC, but so thanks, Bill.
God, I just renewed this morning and saw the auto renewal options. Awesome. Now we have 7,453 members. Dan, for his work on planning a net promoter score type survey for non-competition. Okay, great. So I will get with Dan and work out what a net promoter. For type survey is. I've done surveys, so I may know what it is. I'm just not recognizing the terminology, so thanks, Dan. And we'll look at it from yours. Joe, also, of course, the assumption is that the person not getting a life membership actually remains a member and pays dues for the rest of her life. That's correct. Thanks. Ed, your thoughts for? NAR future activities endeavors?
Well, that's a wide open question. How much time do I have? Oh, my goodness. Yeah, Todd, you're gonna have to kick me off if I'm running too late. I think I, at some point, I gotta jump off, but. I think with respect to, because we've slowed down because of COVID, I think once the the country starts to really start recuperating from COVID, that NAR is gonna. Get things like gangbusters and hopefully our launch sites and and people are ready for it. In in terms of the meeting structure like what we have now. We're planning on having additional meetings just like this and hopefully. We're gonna keep sort of growing the participation in this. So let me skip to a couple more questions and I think I'm out of time. As I said, Bill Lindsey students, yeah, Bill, let's, yeah, we just got to. I think better connect you with the. With the AI because they're doing, like I said, just a lot of different programs associated with recruiting of students. And Bill, I don't know if this what Bill meant, but I wonder what efforts we make to recruit TARC. Participants into the more traditional NAR hobby. Ah, okay. Yeah, I mean, certainly there's a lot of touch points with the students and as best we can, we try to, but. And I guess our struggle is that the the students are very focused on TARC as the activity and. At that point in their lifetime. Membership in the NAR is is not why they're participating, and our hope is, and I think we're seeing it somewhat. In in return on this investment is that just by getting people into the the hobby. That longer term, when they have, they. Get out of college, have families and get back into more of a swing of thing, we're seeing people. Return to rocketry that were in it initially as TARC, so.
And can a TARC-like event be planned in NAR? Sure, I think you need to talk to Dan Wolf and Ed Lacroix, and they can help you right out.
All right, I think I'm through the questions. And yeah, my two hours is up, so with that, if people have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to me, president@nar.org. Thanks again for everybody who participated, and I hope you enjoy the the rest of the the NarCon. Thank you.